Go ahead, Mark. You had it.
We approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Presentation and awards? Have none tonight? We made a change here. We're bringing our personal appearances and public comments. Is that the same thing?
Yep.
We had two of, you know...
Well, we have personal appearances.
Oh, we have...
Anybody have...
Sorry, I see public comments now. Any personal appearances?
We'll take it. We'll take it. Do that under public comments. Or you can do your down.
Yeah, if you'd like to do it now.
Step up.
Step up, Mark.
Step up.
Your grades.
I'm all right. Mark, Riley, 498 Murphy Street. I'm here again, back, talking about Steve Wallis. He owns a rental house right next to me. Specifically has got your problem. Claiming he sent some gutter guy out to take a look at it. And Carla said that Steve told the gutter guy, "Call me if there's anything wrong with it. If I don't hear from you, it's fixed. It's fine." She said that to Carla and Steve, "There's nothing wrong with the gutter." Well, his gutter guy, American, saw what they did. He riveted a little, um, all my daughter was using, a little piece of sheet metal up on the, um, south side of the gutter. Okay, that's not the problem. The gutter is below the roof line. The roof line's up here and the water just shoots over and under my foundation. Steve knows. He knew of this a year ago. And I told you what his little plan is. And I mean, now I think it's obvious to everybody. He is doing what he's, what he planned to do. He will not fix that gutter. And it's ruining my, my foundation. Now, I told Mark a long time ago, I would never, I would never put a claim against the city, and I won't. I talked to my attorney, and he said, well, he'll go after the owner of that house. But, he said, because I made a complaint a long time ago, he said, "He would only do it if he came after you guys, the city." I said, "No, I won't do that. I'm not going to sue the city for that, for that done. I won't do that." So, you know, I might have to go to small claims court to him, but I'm not going to sue you guys. I won't do that. So, that's where that stands. I need some help. I mean, I don't know, does, when does it become criminal that he will not fix it and he knows it's causing damage? I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's, I guess why it's, my question is to you guys.
I did stop down there, cut him out in the yard one day, and there's really two issues there. One, the gutter is too low. Uh, it's a metal roof on top, but the water's running right over the top of it. And then two, where the downspout comes down, the pipe that comes out to the curb, um, is running uphill and it's not getting any water away. But he does have a legitimate problem.
Well, I am loathe to give legal advice.
Yeah, that's reasonable here. This young man sitting right here.
I'm loathe to give him legal advice, but, uh, but generally when you have an issue between neighbors like that, uh, the cause of action would be a private nuisance for redirecting water, uh, against the other landowner. Uh, I'm not concerned about the city's liability, uh, unless the city created the problem.
Well, yeah, the city didn't create the problem, but we do have an ordinance that says that you can't direct your stormwater onto a public street and create a public nuisance.
Correct.
Uh, I guess a single person being armed by this water might rise to the level of public nuisance. I don't know.
It's more of a private nuisance. Uh, you see these issues come up all the time between neighbors and our municipalities and, and if we can enforce a code, a building code violation, I'm not, I'm not up to date yet on the building code. If there's a building code violation that we can enforce against the other owner, by all means, we should do that. Uh, but, uh, a lot of times, well, you know, we even have people that have doubt, they, I'm not saying this isn't the case with you, but sometimes you have feuding neighbors, and they'll purposely funnel all their gutters into their neighbor's property to flood their backyard or flood their basement. There's nothing the city can do about that. They have to go to court. They have to sue that person. And there's a specific nuisance, uh, cause of action for redirecting the flow of water to cause damage to your real estate. So, that's, I think, it's the right thing to consult with an attorney. I'm not at all concerned with the city's liability in this situation unless we created the problem. What's the address of the property you're talking about?
I have talked, I talked to Steve about the problem once, and he did put that little splash guard up there. I guess the, I would say the...
It's 486...
Probably needs to put a splash guard. I told him what he needed to do, because I told him that same thing. Your gutter's too low. The water's coming off that steel roof and over passing the gutter, and it needs to go into the gutter. Instead, it's going over, right over the side, you know, so...
And he told Carla, according to his gutter guy, he didn't get back to him, so there's no problem with his gutter. The guy just, just deliberately knew it. And a year ago, the man knew it. And I just, I don't know what else. I mean, Carla's seen what it's doing to my foundation. I mean, it's, it's really, the one wall, it's just undermining. It just keeps washing the dirt. I go down with five gallon buckets in a bad storm, I'm mucking out the mud. It's just washing out underneath my foundation and walks, it's washing into my little pipe that, you know, runs out to the street. So, I'm out there mucking five gallon buckets of mud out all the time.
You got a basement underneath there?
A basement? Yes, sir. Yeah, and as I said, it will, it'll come out from underground, up through my foundation, and it ran along that one, the latest extension, 1964, that last part was put on. And that's the foundation. It's eaten out. And then it runs down to the cement part of the basement and plugs up my drains. So, then I'm out there mucking up all this super mud. And I've done everything I could. I put drains in on my side, but it just, it goes down underground and it comes right up at the footing. I mean, you'll see it in bad rain. Carla's seen it. It was, it wasn't bubbling up. I just want to thank you guys. I don't want to bend in your ear, but I don't know what else to do. I'm not going to sue you guys if it's, I mean, maybe I'll stay in small claims court. I don't know. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. You're on the way for that man.
He's on the agenda.
He's on the agenda, okay. Any other personal appearances?
For... Okay, thank you.
I want to do a public introduction.
Go ahead.
Paul admitted personally, but those who are viewing this tonight haven't. Uh, the new city attorney is Mark Misha, and this is his first meeting. He brings a lot of experience and knowledge about municipal law and has worked as a city attorney and prosecuting attorney in various jurisdictions. And I think we're fortunate to have him aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Welcome. All right, we're really excited about adding you to our clientele. City Attorney of City of Soto in Lexington. Our program is in Simmsboro and Crystal Linnies as well, and Scottsdale, some water districts, sewer districts. Jay, those districts. We do a lot of, you know, primarily Jefferson County, but in New Orleans as well, so really, really happy to meet you.
Good.
Glad to have you.
Thanks.
Paul, get to the board.
Okay, so the mayor came in to the office the other day.
What?
And said, "You know, these reports get distributed. Everybody has an opportunity to read them." You know, I don't think we need to necessarily read them again. And I'm going to be conscious of that by not covering anything except things that I want to highlight, because you can all read my report. One of the things in my report was a cut and paste problem. I did not go to another rip and cutting for a bill ever after. I just didn't get cut. Um, but I would like to point out that the tower, the derelict tower at the fairgrounds has been removed. Contractor was good for his word. As soon as the fair was over, he got in there and got it down, uh, and cleaned up. And you can hardly tell it was ever there.
He did a good job.
Yeah, he did do a good job.
Cleaned up in a hurry, too.
And, uh, the, uh, I mentioned to you in our last meeting that I was going to attend a meeting with people to talk about the lease payments. Uh, the president of the company from Italy, uh, wasn't able to get here on the day, so we rescheduled for August the 1st. And the mayor's going to try to attend that meeting with me. Uh, at our last meeting, you directed me to prepare the work on getting bids for asphalt overlay on two of our streets that we can pay for out of the general fund, and that work is completed. The advertisement is called in today. It'll run Wednesday in the Wednesday paper. Uh, we sent out notices to local contractors and, and so kind of a personal invitation to bid. And, uh, so that'll, that'll progress. Uh, we have to give 10 days' notice, you know, so we'll have to wait for the 10 days the bid opening is for August or something.
What's 10?
The, uh, Mark and I met with, uh, Frank Elvers' firm. I think the conversation went very well. Uh, Frank and Duke are very cooperative. Uh, they went over kind of the active files. Uh, we delivered banker boxes to them so they can load up the historic files, and we'll deliver those to, to Mark's office so that he'll have them available for review in case something comes up for which there's already been, been work done. Um, you heard... The county was declared, I think I mentioned this to you, as a disaster area for the, um, flooding that we had back in April, I guess. Where was it? Yeah. And, uh, so I went to the kickoff meeting with that. We have about $4,000 in damages. Takes, uh, $3,100 is their minimum threshold, so we're over the minimum threshold for a small project. And we've scheduled a meeting with them. They're going to come to town to meet with us to kind of get the paperwork and start processing that. Um, not a lot of money, but it's worth the effort. The other thing that, uh, we kind of discussed is a lot of communities, this is not on my report, and I want to bring it up now. Uh, the agenda will have a consent item. And so, things that are not controversial, kind of routine in nature, are put on the consent, consent agenda. And then there's one motion to approve however many items are, are on the consent agenda without having to read everyone and vote on everyone. And Mark thinks that's, uh, a proper way to do it and help streamline the meetings. It'd be things like the financial report. Now, so we're gonna, we're gonna introduce an ordinance in our next meeting revising the, the agenda because the current agenda is memorialized by ordinance in our code book. And then so we'll revise it to move the public comments up, add a consent agenda item. And from hereafter, we'll put those things on the consent agenda. Now, if you read the agenda and there's an item on there that you want to discuss or you think deserves, uh, discussion, then, uh, you can always take it off the consent, uh, agenda and put it on the regular agenda. You can let me know ahead of time. You can do it the night of the meeting. You can come in and say, "I want this consent item moved to, to consideration agenda." And it will be taken off. We'll do a, an agenda amendment, amendment when you're approving the agenda. And it will then be on the floor for discussion when we get to it as a regular consideration item. No objections?
None.
We'll proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra, you're up next.
Good evening, everyone. Um, you have my report in front of you. There are a couple of things that I would like to, um, point out. Um, first of all, our visitors for June were 2,299, which is up a little bit over last year. June, uh, for the year, we're right about par where we were this time for last year. Um, I wanted to point out that the St. Genevieve German band has been participating in our Saturdays in St. Genevieve program. And every time we put them up on Facebook, we get a lot of hits on that, very popular, both with the locals and our visitors. And they play right down at the corner of Main and Merchant Streets. Um, I wanted to, um, talk about, well, you've got the Eclipse, um, review there. In addition, um, with the travel schedules and vacation schedules, it's been impossible to get one meeting of the whole group of leaders that, um, we had for the Eclipse Planning Committee, so I've been meeting with them individually. Um, this week I met with Felix Meyer, um, also with, um, the hospital in terms of, uh, planning for additional health concerns. And next week I'll be meeting with our law enforcement. Um, also been looking at transportation and kind of reviewing that. We're probably going to be adding some additional, um, shuttles between the off-site parking and viewing, uh, event space for Monday. Um, you saw the article in this week's paper about the Eclipse Music Festival on Sunday. I hope everyone will get out and participate in that. We have a couple of local bands that will be participating, as well as, uh, four additional bands that we'll be bringing in from near and far and hope to have some entertainment that everyone would enjoy, as well as benefiting some of our local organizations. Um, I also, this isn't on my, um, report, but tomorrow night is a Fourth Friday Art Walk for the month of July. The theme is a luau theme, so it's a great chance to get out and patronize our downtown businesses, meet your neighbors, and, um, have a nice stroll, uh, see some art, have some wine, that kind of thing. Also, last night at the DeBerg Center, um, we co-hosted, along with Downtown Renewal and the Foundation for Restoration of St. Genevieve, an informational workshop on the subject of historic preservation tax credits. So, um, property owners that might have been interested, or those who might be thinking about, um, historic preservation tax credits, um, had the chance to come and listen to really the expert in the state, Bill Hart. He's Executive Director of, um, Historic Preservation, uh, for the State of Missouri, and, um, always does an excellent job with that. We've had him come here and talk on this subject periodically. So, we just had that last night at DeBerg Center. And then finally, I wanted to, um, direct your attention to the backside of your, um, report this evening. This is really, um, at the last week's Tourism Advisory Council meeting, um, we discussed, uh, the results, and many of the TAC members participated in kind of a brainstorming session that we had at the Welcome Center to talk about, you know, we have all these changes coming for St. Genevieve. We're a candidate for a National Park Historic Site. Um, we also have the Green Tree Tavern coming back on board. The Bull Duke is doing some changes on its campus. So, really, we wanted to talk about where are we going in the future? What do we see? What's the vision? And certainly, um, if any of you were not able to participate in that evening and you would like to, uh, give your personal input, obviously, your input is always, um, welcome, but this is a chance to really kind of think about this list of the things that ranked the highest that evening, and maybe even to add something in that, um, didn't make the list. But we're going to be working, um, at the suggestion of the Tourism Advisory Council, we're going to be, um, circulating this information through the Herald Newspaper and also through the Chamber of Commerce just to gather some additional, uh, information from residents, business owners, uh, government leaders, and so on. So, those are some of the things that, um, ranked the highest amongst the people that participated in that program, um, on June 21st, I think it was. So, that's my report. If you ever have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me down at the Welcome Center. If you can catch me there, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, you can call me on my cellphone. All right, thank you.
Jason?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of things I want to touch on from the report. Um, we have hired an officer to fill the vacancy, Zachary Durham. He's not here tonight. He'll start on August 2nd. Um, he is a local kid, attended St. Genevieve School, lives just outside the city, north of town. So, he'll be joining us on August the 2nd. And then also I wanted to touch on in the report, um, as you can see, our K-9 Yadi passed away on July 19th from a work-related illness. Um, he, he started with us on November 20th of 2015. Um, he ended his career June 21st of 2017. I have some numbers I kind of want to give you guys, just to give you an idea of what he'd done in the time that he was here. He was deployed 145 times for building searches, alarm calls, and building checks, 121 drug deployments. Of those 121, he alerted on 72 vehicles with drugs being seized out of 71 of the 72 vehicles. 53 for marijuana, nine for methamphetamine, five cocaine, and six heroin where arrests were made. He seized $10,000 worth of counterfeit money, and he was also responsible for the apprehension of two suspects. Uh, one that had fled into a wooded area that he had tracked and made the apprehension on, and one that was barricaded in a house. Of the drug arrests, um, two of them were packages that were intercepted from the postal service, um, that we were able to use the dog to identify the package and make the arrests, where he got two pounds of marijuana on one and a pound of methamphetamine valued at about $10,000 that was to be delivered to the streets of St. Genevieve. So, that's just some kind of numbers of what, what he has done for us. Um, I just got word today that the insurance has paid on the claim for the loss of the dog. Um, we're going to be coming to the board asking for replacement of the dog. Um, my understanding, they paid off on everything except the deductible, which is what the city will have to pay to replace him.
Well, assuming the cost of replacement's the same as the payment from the insurance company, we don't really know that at this point.
With the company that we have been speaking to.
Yeah, it's company.
Yeah. That's where it is right now.
I'm accounting with your negotiating skills.
We're, we'll try, but it was a little bit higher now. We negotiated to that point, so I'm not sure how much more, but that's where we're at with that.
How long would it take to get a K-9 ready for...
The company that we're talking to is actually a smaller company. Um, they do a little bit more one-on-one training. The guy has actually had a dog imported, um, that'll be here next week. Once he gets the dog, it'll take three weeks with the trainer to have the dog to get him ready. And then we would send our officer there, and the officer will spend six weeks with the dog and the trainer, and then he'll be certified and ready.
Better than I thought. Yeah, looks so... As far as that, that money, that, that's not, uh, something you can put your hands on. You said $10,000, that street value thing? So, but there ain't anything we can recoup from seizing stuff like that, is there?
No, not for seizing the actual product. Um, if we seize money or property that we can relate to, that we can file for forfeiture. Um, the way it works on the state level, if we file, file forfeiture, the money goes back to the state and we don't see it. Um, if we do it on the federal level, then a percentage can come back.
Jason, did you say a minute ago counterfeit money?
Correct.
He, he recognized counterfeit money also?
He alerted if it's been used in any kind of drug transaction where they've had the scent on their hands. He will alert on any item that they have touched, and he made an alert, and it was counterfeit money.
That's impressive. He said work-related illness?
Correct.
What, what?
Heat-related.
Well, I kind of figured it was so hot that...
Yeah, it was a heat-related illness.
That's a shame. Yep, sure is. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's not skating, right?
Steve's at manager meeting today and tomorrow. I'll be covering for him tonight. Uh, I was out the month of June. I should be able to answer any questions you may have, and I'll be more than happy to get the answer for you.
So, last I talked to Steve about doing the smoke testing on the sewer lines, and Mark was waiting for equipment to be delivered because there was some equipment that was available at the time. We were going to do it, it was incompatible with the system. Do you have any idea when that equipment's going to be coming?
I know this, uh, project Steve was working on, and we have not gotten the equipment. I've not seen anything done. I would have to refer to him to find out when, when he has an ETA for it.
We did camera those lines and didn't find any anomalies, so the, the next step is the smoke test to see, you know, where it might be leaking or might be, has a illicit connection to the system or whatever.
Old lateral that may have not been kept. Something strange in the lower areas. Smoke will normally, well, smoke it out. Any other questions on, uh, on Steve's report? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, on committee reports, we've, uh, our tourism, uh, committee, we've got that, everybody, we got, with a full board there, NRTAC. Both of those boards are, have replacements and full and, and in good shape right now. So, we're excited about that as we go forward, so... And I know the heritage board, they, they had a business meeting, uh, meeting about the...
Work session.
Work session, Randy, you were there.
Yep. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
The problem is, we recently, and it's not the first time this happened, got an application that had so little information on it, the board couldn't tell what the person was trying to do, and, and it had to send, send them away to ask them to bring back more information so they could give fair consideration to it. So, we asked them to come up with a, kind of a list of items that we can put on a checklist, and that they would adopt this checklist as the minimum requirement necessary for an application for the board. Carla then, when somebody comes in, can say, "Here's the list." And so, if you want to make an application, we need a scale drawing, we need a list of materials, we need this, these things. And, uh, and they did that. The list is, I think, relatively short, kind of self-explanatory, so, uh, I think it'll help, help keep that from happening again.
I've definitely cleaned things up for them, too, and decisions they have to make. Because I, I really, and I told them, they had, you know, it's very difficult when they have to, when somebody gets rejected there and they bring it to the board. It's just, needs to all hopefully be, and I know it can't happen every time, but with, with what they're doing now, I think you'll see less and less things come to the board, you know? And it puts them in a bad spot, puts us in a bad spot, you all in a bad spot, because it causes problems. But, uh, it's needed at times, but I think it's going to clean things up. And you have seen that. In the meetings I've been in, they've been passing a lot of stuff. And they went back and went through their guidelines and what's, what they can do. It was good. It was a productive meeting.
Good deal.
Good deal. St. Gene, Public TV, uh, website. I encourage everybody to get on there and check that out. I think right now it's still in the preliminary stages, but I believe middle of next week, you could just stjntv.com, get on there. It's really got a neat new format on there, and it's, uh, really user-friendly also, you know? And we also like to encourage anyone who wants to to be a videographer, to do any of the, uh, local events so we can have more local events televised. You know, that's, that's our goal, to get more local events, uh, maybe, because, uh, well, just like we were talking last night, or night before last. Uh, still got the graduation on it, just, you know, and, uh, that's current, but not real current, so... They always do the, the concerts every Thursday, and that's, that's enjoyable to watch on TV for people who can't get out, you know? Or who don't want to deal with mosquitoes at night. Have they been bad, John?
I haven't told them.
Well, you're so busy up there.
You're just waving them away.
You can't keep up.
Is the situation in there?
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, well, now.
Tonight, you're going to be all...
Yes, yeah, outside.
Seems to be the mosquitoes were bad in the early part of the summer, but...
Yes.
Uh, more recently, I've been out in the evening and haven't really...
We've had none out of our house.
Yeah.
There's no mosquitoes in St. Genevieve?
Yes.
No. I guarantee it.
Yeah.
Mission accomplished.
Well, there's not as much water sitting around.
We did have...
Well, I think the dry, yeah, oh, yeah.
It was way worse earlier in the year, and I attribute that to all that rain. Just, just now it's dried up.
There's no breeding.
There you go.
Yeah, we had them in February out of the house.
Yeah, so, it was...
Well, we have the public comments already in. Is everybody, are we with the committees? We'll look at our consent agenda minutes from the regular meeting, July the 13th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then from the closed session, I pass the record.
You got to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bring this to the Treasury Board. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it takes us to whole business. Bill number 4167, it's going to be the second reading, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 300, general provisions, section 300.10, definitions as set forth. Hello?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Doing some more research on UTVs and stuff. I apologize for not doing this sooner, but some of the more safe, little larger UTVs and stuff will not fit under that 2,000-pound weight restriction. That needs to be changed to 2,500.
Can we amend that at this time?
Yeah. That's why you have a second reading, just so you can consider the things you might want to change.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so thank you. You had to.
Is there any more discussion on it? So, we're going to amend that, and then we'll have a roll.
Do you need a new motion then?
Yeah, it should be easy.
I'll make a motion to accept bill number 4167 with the amendment to change the pounds to 2,500.
Second. All right, and we'll have to have a roll call vote.
Alderman Grimmiter?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4167 now becomes ordinance 4102.
Very good. We'll look at bill number 4168, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 340, miscellaneous driving rules by adding section 340.250, operation of a UTV vehicle. Second reading. No approval. Second. No comments? A roll call vote?
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmiter?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4168 now becomes ordinance 4103.
Very good, thank you. Bill number 4170, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 385, bicycles and motorized bicycles by adding section 385.110, riding on motorized bicycle, additional passenger, and other requirements.
Make a motion to approve bill number 4170.
Oh, did we, oh, I'm sorry, did you second?
I'll second.
Now, is there any comments?
No, no, yeah, I was going to second it. He has to put his comments, I said, no.
Yeah, no, you did have, somebody wants to.
Yes. I didn't, I don't know, somebody did.
This is the, as it looks like it's written, the operator of a motorized bicycle must have a current full Missouri Class F driver's license. I read that as excluding anybody with an intermediate license from operating, and I don't think that's our intent. I don't think we want to exclude 16 and 17-year-olds from the ability to operate a scooter in town. So, I would say that we strike that section C there, 385.110, to, and then revert back to the already current licensing requires for operating.
So, Rex, do you, do you agree with that amendment to your motion?
Yeah.
And who was the second?
Joe.
Did you agree with that amendment to your motion?
And we'll have a roll call vote?
Alderman, Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmiter?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4170 now becomes ordinance 4104.
Very good. Very good.
Very good.
Takes us to new business.
Amen to that.
Another business. We have a St. Genevieve Museum is applying for a temporary liquor license for the Solar Eclipse Festival for August 19th and the 20th, 27.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Very good. Now, we have Mr. Eric Sonnixon, is requesting a liquor license to operate a tasting room for local wine and beers at 401 Market Street. I believe that's the information we have.
Merchant or market?
Market.
Well, it says the library, I mean, the museum. This says merchant. Or a museum market.
Don't market, it's right here on the corner of your market.
The property next to market.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that the gas station? Oh, okay, I got it. All right, thank you.
On here, it says merchant. Yeah, that's what I was saying. And this is... Yeah, it's fourth and market, not fourth and merchant.
So, it needs to be market street.
Well, we both agree on both of them. It says market.
Yeah, this, this is a handout, even after the application.
It's listed on the agenda, the regulations.
Yeah. Down on here.
All right, go forward, what your intentions are?
Hopefully, I can make this so to be brief. This is not my usual style, I have enough risk for infection, and so, glad to answer your questions, and I satisfy everything. I'd be glad to put it in writing for you later. My, Nicole, my mission here, as far as business, as concerned, is to operate a facility that anybody who's in town, and within the county, that would be appropriate, that would be invited to have space in there. There'll be shelves, kiosks, et cetera. So, any winery, for example, within this county, will be invited to have their, have, excuse me, have their wines on display, of course, unlimited amount, don't have the much space, and intention would be that whatever is sold within the shop would reflect whatever they sell on their premises, so there wouldn't be any conflict, excuse me, or concern regarding, oh, I bought it for more here than there. So, this is intended to make guests happy, and on top of that, it's anybody who has displays there, anybody who, and there'll be no cost for their displays. Obviously, I'll be making money off of it. I'm not a shillier.
Simon's house.
Well, that's what, that's one of the models, and also, it's sort of like an antique mall, so it's going to be, except there will be a charge for a presence in the facility. The only charge it will be is, people choose to put a sign on the wooden picket fence, it will be on Rozuko's property.
I hate to force you back around, but...
Oh, yes. I'm a former teacher, so I'm still wondering.
Well, the camera.
Ah, so, approached approximately 26 people in a matter of a couple of days after I got approval from the county for this, and after meeting with, of course, the Board of Health, and discussing the plans with State of Missouri as far as licensing for that, our intention is to open up the weekend of the Solar, Pride of Solar Eclipse, had opened to be, yeah, excuse me, pleasure to, that's not possible. So, the intent here is obviously to make money from this, but also to give everybody exposure that isn't exposed to, people coming into this town. For example, a good example would be colliers. Everybody knows the products of overly needs, and I've offered colliers to be there and sell, you know, shrink, packed, packaged goods to people who would like to sample them, and also play on, referring them to their location. Organizations will have racks within, there'll be racks within, sorry, with tourist information, and after spending an afternoon with Ms. Cabot, over the concern of whether we would be representing ourselves as a visitor center, I think we've had that pretty well resolved, and that she's going to be putting information herself into this, and we were, had the expectation, and she has an expectation, that we will not pretend to be the visitor center, but we'll refer anybody, anybody to that location.
Oh, just as a symbol, if you mentioned colliers, would have a refrigeration, or...
Oh, yeah.
You will?
Yes, I've already met with the Board of Health, and I've operated restaurants, and the only thing at this point that I will need to do that is a three-compartment sink, which I can sell off, and approved refrigerator that's intended to be a glass display case.
So, for your alcohol sales here, you're looking at samples of local wine and beer?
Yeah, what I'm applying for is simply a beer and wine license.
To, and then they will, they'll buy it for off-premise consumption? Like, they're not going to buy a beer and then hang out in your store and drink a beer? Is it like...
Oh, not in the building, no.
Right, so it's just the samples, and then they buy it and take it?
Correct.
With them, okay.
So, it's not going to be a tasting room?
Well, in some sense it would be, I mean...
That's what I think would...
Yeah, no, a tasting room is a place where you take a sample?
Yeah.
And then buy a bottle, if you like it, you buy a bottle and you take it with you.
Right.
Not that you say, you know, can I, okay, I'll take a glass of that, and then you...
Right. Even though I'm, I'm sure everyone knows I'm, you know, involved with Ms. Bowman, who really owns a winery out in the country, this is not going to be about River of Oz wine, that may well be there, our wines, but just to make you aware, probably at the end of the year, it's more likely, not that it has anything to do with this, that this will no longer be domestic winery, and this is, we're not going to apply, or I'm not going to apply for, I have no doubt of producing wine on premises, as his wife does, to have a domestic wine license in town.
Eric, one question that came up?
Yes, sir.
With me and stuff, and it really has nothing to do with the liquor license?
All right.
And it was encouraging to see that the Catholic, you already approached them, the church of Central Lake neighborhood. But, one of the questions I would have in that location and stuff is parking. There is almost no parking there, and you're going to almost have to be parking in front of somebody else's property. Have you talked to the other property owners?
Well, I've talked to, certainly Rozuko's in favor of that, parking, there's not any issue. You know, I haven't talked to, obviously, anybody regarding this in other locations, but is that what, that's important, then?
You know, a concern of mine is that we made sure everybody was okay with the parking situation.
Well, you are, is one thing, I think, that'd be major, right? Yeah, well, for the time being, we're going to be open Sunday, so we, well, the likelihood of this, we're only going to be open Friday afternoon through evening. We're looking at like 11:00 to 7:00, 8:00 on Friday and Saturday, and probably 11:00 to 6:00 or 7:00, and it's going to, you know, we'll have to make that determination on the traffic later. But it also offers, a lot of the shops are closed by 5:00, as you're well aware, and other same items will be available there, so it's difficult to see why anybody would, at least merchants and stuff would object. And, for example, one of the people I have on is the ASI, Peter People, amongst all those, that are enthusiastic, you're going to put a display in the place, and whatever they sell it for there will be sold for at the shop.
I think the motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please have it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mooney, your municipal hand sign will be welcome and no charge.
I'd say that after the family.
Is there any conversation between the mayor and the Board of Almen?
Nope, I'm making a motion that we...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No motion.